April 9th, 2014. If anybody have a chance to read those, two thirty-four minutes from tonight's meeting. Does anybody have any additions or corrections to that? No additions or corrections, I don't want to make a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Yeah, make some motion. Your second?
Second.
Okay, let's do it. Special notice, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass four zero three, right? Pass four zero three, right? Yeah. No one, well, I remember saying I just put four zero three.
Minutes approved as they stand.
Thank you, yes, please feel free to call me Suzie. We actually have a few folks here for regional planning, so I can just kind of give some introductory remarks to introduce myself, and then I'll turn it over to Connie Chung who will kind of start off with what we'll be sharing and talking about. Alright, my name is Suzie Tay. I am now leading the Community Studies More in Section of Regional Planning. So we oversee the long-range planning for both this area and the Alamo Valley in terms of plans, ordinances, and any other sort of long-range efforts that are going on from a regional planning standpoint. So it's very nice to be here. Actually, I was just commenting that I don't know if I've been this far in Agua Dulce City, but it's beautiful and it's a beautiful day. So thank you for having us, and yeah. So with that, I'll actually turn it over to Connie Chung.
Glad to be found.
Yes. I had some awkward expressions.
So thank you so much for having us. I'm really happy to be here. We're here today to talk about the general plan update. So it's the countywide general plan for all of the unincorporated areas of LA County. Quite a big document in terms of scale. We also want to, because when people say we're working on the countywide general plan and it applies everywhere, what does that mean for your community? So we also want to clarify kind of how the countywide general plan works in conjunction with an area plan, which is One Valley One Region, a saturated area plan, as well as community standards districts, a zoning code. So we'll try to clarify all of that for you because we realize there's a lot of different layers when it comes to planning and zoning, and we're available to answer your questions. So I'm going to start off with the countywide general plan so you can kind of get a good full context of what we're working on. I'll pass back over to Suzie Tay, who will provide more specific details related to the Significant Ecological Areas Program and how that needs to be implemented, as well as our hillside management ordinance update. And then we'll kick it over to Carl Nadella, who will then kind of talk about how all of these different pieces and layers of regulations work together. And then we're happy to answer any questions that you might have. So the county is working on the countywide general plan update, and as I mentioned before, it does apply to all unincorporated areas. So it applies to Awadose, it applies to Lake Los Angeles and the Alamo Valley, it applies to Catalina Island, it applies to suburban communities like Royal Heights in the Santa Fe Gabriel Valley, it applies to South LA communities. So it really does cover everything. And the main thing that you need to know about the countywide general plan is it is the foundational document for all of our other plans. So it's a foundational document for, in this case, of the unincorporated Santa Coria Valley, for the One Valley One Region document. So they're really all designed to work in conjunction with each other, but the countywide document is the main basis, the foundation. The countywide general, we do have an existing countywide general plan. It was last adopted by the Board of Supervisors in 1980, so it's been a very long time. And the department's been working, some of you might have been involved with these efforts, but the department has been working on this effort for a very long time. And we're at the point right now where we are in the middle of public hearings before the Regional Planning Commission, and we hope to get this document to the Board of Supervisors soon for their consideration. So if you look at the unincorporated areas, it's about 2,600 square miles. A lot of land area. So it covers a huge area, but it's also very comprehensive in scope. So it has a land use element, a mobility element, which includes circulation and transportation issues, an air quality element, conservation of natural resources, noise, safety, public services and facilities, economic development, parks and recreation. And we also have housing elements. So it's all very all-encompassing. Because it's a huge and all-encompassing document, and the unincorporated areas, we kind of just picture some of the communities that I listed, it's very diverse. We have rural communities, we have urbanized communities, communities next to transit stations in some of our South LA communities. We have coastal communities, suburban, urban, rural. So it's a little overwhelming if you think about one plan, kind of planning for all of these diverse areas. And in fact, you know, we want the general plan to acknowledge that that's kind of what is the county's strength, is its diversity. So on one hand, we do have a foundational document that does plan for all of these areas, but it also acknowledges the unique needs of all of our communities. So what it essentially does is it has something called, in the general plan, it's called the Planning Areas Framework. And you all got the handouts, this map here. The general plan basically divides the county up into 11 planning areas. In the case of the community of Awadose, it falls within the Santa Coria Valley Planning Area. Basically the same boundaries of OVO. The idea is that with the implementation of the general plan, we want to prepare area plans for all of our communities. So in the case of Santa Coria Valley, you have OVO already, but there's a lot of communities, like the San Gabriel Valley for instance, that don't have community plans, don't have CSDs. So the idea is to, in order to implement the regional countywide vision of the general plan, we do want to prepare area plans. And by doing, using this format, we are trying to, again, celebrate and work with the diversity of the county. So it's very broad in that sense, but it is still very important to participate in the general plan update because, again, it does serve as the foundational document, although in this case we have OVO. We actually design, we work with the OVO team to try to, you know, encompass the same goals and policies so that they work consistently together. So a couple of handouts that I brought with me just to provide you with more of an overview, and just as an executive summary. So, you know, it gives you a summary of all the different elements that I just mentioned. It also talks about guiding principles, and those are very broad, but certainly we're open to any recommendations that anyone might have. These guiding principles are just kind of what keeps all the elements of the general plan consistent with one another. So we don't want to say that one issue is more important than another. We're saying that a strong diversified economy is just as important as excellence in environmental resource management. And it's our way of maintaining consistency across the board when we're actually implementing the general plan. So these guiding principles are very important. Again, we welcome your input. There's another copy of Chapter Five. It's called the Planning Areas Framework. So this works in conjunction with this map. I only gave you a copy of the introduction and a description of the Santa Coria Valley Planning Area, but it basically just has demographic information in terms of the number of housing units in the Santa Coria Valley Planning Area, existing population, demographic information, and a little description about some of the general issues. So again, although, again, we have an area plan in the case of Santa Coria Valley, we definitely want to get your input on how we're describing the planning area. And again, you're going to see policies that are very general. I know that rural character is very important to this community, and we have been working recently through the public hearing process with other adjacent rural communities that have given us a lot of recommendations to kind of strengthen and even, and create a balance so that the general plan is not just talking about one kind of community, but that, you know, we're talking about what a user or like a complete street would mean in a rural community versus an urban community. And they're very different things. One community would entail more infrastructure and sidewalks. You know, in the case of a rural, you wouldn't have sidewalks, but you would think about mobility in terms of, you know, like theater trails and equestrian uses, and not as much infrastructure, but ways to maintain the rural character. So we want to make sure that this foundational document encompasses all communities, which, again, is part of the intent to celebrate diversity. And with that, I'm going to kick it over to Suzie, who's going to talk a little bit more in detail about the SCA program and hillside management, which is part of the general plan update.
So, yes, so as Connie mentioned, two of the implementation pieces that are going together with the general plan update is the hillside management ordinance and the SCA ordinance. The hillside management ordinance is an update to the existing hillside management ordinance. So for those who may not be familiar with the existing regulations, there's a calculation that determines whether a conditional use permit is required for development in a hillside area. And it really focuses on how many units are appropriate for that area and how the design can be protective of the hillside resources. What we have found through this general plan update is that a lot of the focus in really getting good projects in hillside areas is on design rather than on density. So really looking at how the development is proposed on the property rather than, you know, simply a number that may not have as much of a meaningful reflection on how the hillside resources are being protected. So the hillside management ordinance is being updated again as part of this effort. One of the things that also will be accompanied with this ordinance is a Hillside Design Guidelines Manual, which is intended to be more descriptive of how to actually achieve good hillside design. So it's really intended to be more clear for the community, for developers, for our decision-makers, to have concrete ways to make the projects more hillside-friendly. So, for example, there are a number of measures that relate to the location on the actual property itself in terms of how to design the roads that are more respectful of the existing natural contours so that there's less grade events involved as you're designing the street system. There are design measures that focus on aesthetics so that for the surrounding community that are looking at these new developments, that there's more of a blending of the character with the new development with the existing surrounding character. So those are just two examples that really cover a lot of different categories that relate to hillside resources. And it's intended to talk about how to design sensitively for private projects, but it's also meant to be a tool for our county projects as well. So as other projects come through, again, it's really a resource for everyone to look to, to see how can make projects better in these hillside areas.
Ma'am?
Yes.
All this refers to the Hillside Design Guidelines manual, correct?
Yes, Hillside Design Guidelines, exactly, yeah. And that is a component with the hillside management ordinance. The other main piece that our section's working on as part of the general plan update is the update to the Significant Ecological Areas Program, or SEAs. And as part of the program, at a countywide level, we're looking at the boundaries of the SEAs and really looking at how we can be protective of the resources in a way that still accompanies good development. So it's trying to strike a balance between development, you know, acknowledging that these affect private properties, with conserving the most valuable habitat so that those areas and those resources can be maintained, you know, into the future. So as part of the boundaries, that is something that is part of the general plan, conservation of open space element. There are a number of golden policies that really talk about how to strike that balance between conservation and development, and to also really design projects with being more sensitive to the hillside resources, uh, excuse me, to the natural resources. The boundaries have, for this particular area, have also, have already been addressed in the One Valley One Region project. So with the general plan update and the SCA program that goes forward, there won't be any changes in terms of what the existing boundaries are today. So that's something that, you know, that this community would already be familiar with in terms of where the SCA definitions are. The other big piece to the SCA program is the new ordinance. And we're really proud of the ordinance because we see it as a way to refine the existing ordinance and make it focused on impacts. So currently, there is one process for any development in an SCA. A conditional use permit is required. What we are proposing with the new ordinance is to have a tiered approach so that for development in already disturbed areas or for single-family homes or other things that are really minor in nature, that those can be reviewed with a hot plan, which would be, you know, part of the process that a single-family home would go through today. And as you tier up to other types of development, that there is an interim step to the full conditional use permit process. So, again, it's really providing tools within the ordinance that are related to the potential impacts that are being created rather than sort of a one-size-fits-all for all development within the SEAs. The current community has the existing SCA ordinance with the new boundaries, and so that new ordinance will then provide the full implementation of the SCA program as we had envisioned. The third piece, which is also a great resource, is the SCA program guide. That provides, again, a lot of information about how to design sensitively in these natural resource areas. It is also a tool for our county projects to, again, be respectful of the natural resources and really design their projects in a way that focuses development on the least valuable habitat and saves those most valuable. I think that I did it this point. Maybe I'll turn it over to Carl then, so he can finish up our piece, and then we'll all be available for any questions.
Well, good evening, everyone. And I guess my role this evening was really to tie things up together first. So I know there's a lot of confusion with the general plan, the area plan, with the zoning code, and the CSD. So it can get a bit confusing at most times with how all of these relate to each other. So what I was hoping to do tonight was to sort of walk you through how these different components relate to each other and how they affect you guys in the actual communities. And I do have handouts here as well, and I'll get them out. So maybe just to walk you through them. I think the easiest way to talk about it is, what Connie was saying in the general plan is, what it does is to create the tools in the toolbox for planning to use in terms of designing and managing the development of the communities. What the area plan does is to use these tools in the actual designing of the communities on the ground. And our team is actually in charge of the area planning process, and initially the planning for town and country, or area. I look at the area plan. I wasn't involved with OVO, although I know a bit about it, but if there are questions about, you can answer that. But the experts on that are Mitch Blazer and Marshall, which you guys might know. But Marshall's definitely quite a bit of a lead. So what the area plan does was to take all these tools that the general plan has created and map these out in actual communities. So for your case, the OVO, what it did was to map out the RL10s, the RL5s, the RL2s. So all of these would indicate the densities for your area. What the general plan did was to create all of these, but it was up to the area plan to map these out into actual parcels. And we do that since the area plan team has a more specific geographic focus, and we have a better feel for the communities, we have a better community outreach, we can do part-specific analysis, we can talk to property owners. So we do have a better sense of what's on the ground, we have a better understanding. So we are in a better position to sort of decide where the land uses would go in cases like that. So that's one of the main things that the area plan will do as opposed to the general plan. And what the area plan will do is assign a specific zoning to each parcel, and from there, that's how the zoning code will sort of come into play. The zoning will be basically your A1, like a reefer, or your A2, they have a reefer, or residential, or commercial. So all of those zones would have their corresponding use list in zoning code. So if anybody of you has had the good fortune of going through the zoning code, for each of these zones, they would have like three kinds of lists under each zone. And this would be like permitted uses, or uses that you could get by your directorship, your servah mine permit, or those that would be required, your initial use permit. So all of that would basically let you know what you can do or cannot do in a particular zone, and you tell them the development standards that you need to comply with, like height limits and setbacks and floor erosion and things like that. So all of that is the zoning. And that's still a countywide document, but what the area plan does is take all of these different zones and assign them to specific parcels in the community. So aside from that, then you do have the community standards distribution. You guys have just had the exercise of payday recently. And what that does, though, is to sort of put in more specific standards than what the countywide zoning code does. So for example, A1 and A2 has their specific standards. The CSD can sort of put in more specific standards aside from those that will be specific just to your community. And it could be specific to a particular area, a street, or a certain zone. So there's a lot of things that a community can do in the community standards district. And we do that in order to allow the communities to have a bigger say in terms of defining the character, the culture of their community. And it helps us sort of define the place-making of the community. So Awadose will be different from Acton, or from Little Rock, or San Luis. So all of these tools are really available to you guys to, you know, to make use of and make sure that the community evolves into something that you guys envision for the community for the next 10, 15, 20 years. The toughest thing about it, and that's the toughest thing about our job, is to find what that community wants, what the vision is. And I'm sure in your meetings, we all don't agree about what we think is good for the community. So that's a challenge. So our part is to really take you guys through the process and make sure it's inclusive, it's participatory, we listen to everybody, all the stakeholders. And whatever the process ends up to, we're hoping that's the best vision, that's the best representation of the vision of the community for that particular area. So those are basically the tools we have at our disposal. And I know it's pretty complicated. What we do with the area plan, we do try to explain things to people so you guys would understand, and you guys would be able to give us a really good feedback, a more informed feedback in terms of what you want for the community. And we'll basically draft the plans to make sure that that's reflected, you know, in the plans that will go for in your community for the next 10, 20 years. So I mean, that's, that's pretty much it. It's a very rough description of how things work. It's much more complicated than that. So when the people come into specific projects or, you know, development proposals, and we do have to check the development standards, but that's how it's going to work. So they will look at first the general plan, how does it look for the area, and then look at the zoning and land uses specified with the area plan. And whatever zones there is, A1 or A2, they look at that, the zoning code for specific uses, the development standards, and then they check your community standards district, just to make sure that they look compliant with that as well. So I guess in terms of how it all works, again, the CSD is the most specific description of what your community will need. The general plan is sort of the big picture description, and then the area plan is a more specific description of it. It's not a matter of what takes proceeded over the others. We have just different levels of review or design that we do for the community. And then the zoning code makes it more specific than if I look at the CSD at all. So that's pretty much it. So I guess we can open up questions to Marshall. If you have more specific questions that we can't answer, we'll take it down, and we'll promise to take that to you and say it's your job, so.
One common complaint we hear is that people trying to develop property or build a house hit more and more roadblocks as far as regulations and requirements. And a lot of people are even leaving the state as you're far as, I'm sure you're aware. Are these changes that you're making, are they more stringent and restrictive? Or are they more land ownership-based, where they allow the person that owns the property to do what they bought the property for? What's your feeling on that?
Well, I'll have to answer it in another very direct way because you guys do have an existing area plan and a CSD. But what we have now that would actually affect your area is the general plan. And that's really more of a, a more general description of countywide policies and direction setting for the county, which I don't think we translate into that kind of detail for you guys. I would say that I can talk about the Alamo Valley area plan. In those cases, we are actually relaxing quite a bit of the regulations. We are thinking of allowing more things that would be appropriate in a rural area, but not appropriate in an urban area. I think OVO, and I can't, again, I can't speak for certain, but I think it does pretty much the same thing. I think it does, it sort of restricts lower densities, but a bit more things to do in those lower densities. But, again, I can't speak for certain, since I was. But I think that's sort of the intent of both the area plan and the Santa Coria.
I think what we want to clarify is that through the general plan update, for instance, we're not making any land use changes, no zone changes in the Santa Coria Valley.
How does your plan, your general plan, affect those, though? In other words, when do you think this general plan is going to affect?
We are hoping late this year or early next year. And by law, actually, there's actually a general plan law. We're required to have internal consistency between all of our documents. And I know it's a little confusing because OVO came first. So OVO is essentially implementing the 1980 plan that I talked about before. However, the key was working with Mitch Blazer and his team on the OVO effort to make sure that there's consistency so that when we have the general plan adopted, that it doesn't change anything that's already been established through the area plan. So I think that's the one thing, going back to Chapter Five, Planning Areas Framework, is that this general plan really makes it explicit that it defer, in terms of land use and zoning, it really defers to the area planning process, which then works in conjunction with other tools like community standards districts. And that goes back to, again, that premise that I told you about that, you know, the unincorporated area is, are, you know, built upon diverse communities. And the last thing we want to do is to have, you know, a one-size-fits-all approach for, you know, all 2,600 square miles. So in that sense, the foundational document, which confusioningly is coming after the area plan, is meant to support it and not preclude anything that's already been agreed upon and adopted by the Board of Supervisors.
So when this goes into effect, these other tiers here aren't going to have to change to fit the new one? And that would be my concern. It kind of reminds me of, you know, like this is the, this is the federal government, this is the state government, this is the county, this is the city, and we're down here. We don't even have a city. But that's, so, but it's basically what you're saying is, this is more or less a guideline and description of the area, is it?
It is, it's the foundation. Like, it's not, again, if the general plan said, you know, put skyscrapers everywhere across the unincorporated area, then you should be worried. But it doesn't do that. And, you know, you could check, you could check that by looking at the draft. Again, this planning areas framework is really important for that reason, to acknowledge that one size does not fit all, even though we do, or are required by law to prepare a plan that covers all of these. I mean, you don't want to have the same standards as Catalina Island, right?
Well, and that's the concern because it seems like one of the risks we have with the OVO is that they didn't really understand what the term rural meant. Because, like you said, this is the first time you've come in this far. You know, the kind of the rule out here is to find a place you go till you think you've lost, and you go a block further. And that's kind of, that's kind of the way everybody survives out here. So it's a different lifestyle.
Mindset.
Mindset, different everything. And that's where I'm concerned, that maybe the planners don't really, that they look at it like Andy at Mayberry and don't understand that Awadose and Acton do have diverse differences, and if we group them both together, one of the two are going to be upset, so to speak.
Right, fair enough. And I think we are relying on you to tell us if we... And I think we are relying on you to tell us if we got it right. Again, I think in the discussions that we've had with other communities like Acton, for instance, they've given us a lot of, and I think what was nice about the working meetings that we had with some of the members of the Acton Town Council was that they were trying to think about rural in a larger sense, not just Acton, but maybe all of the rural unincorporated communities. And for that reason, a lot of the recommendations that they made are very general because again, we want our flexibility and there are those nuanced differences. And that's where the CSDs come in and all of that. But, you know, in our discussions, we talked a lot about infrastructure and kind of the role that infrastructure plays in contributing to the lifestyle and mindset and even the way a community looks. But if there are additional, or of course, lower density and kind of traffic infrastructure, like traffic signals and all of that. So if you want to contribute to kind of painting a more accurate picture of the general view of rural character, then please, you know, we want to make it as strong as we can and representative of all communities.
Where the boundaries should be.
The boundaries for what?
Well, like where the CSD or the county or the Acton CSD, where it ends, where it starts. Who makes that decision?
I think it's an interactive process, so, you know, it has to come from the community.
And if it does, and they're not really listening, there's a little issue with some, where Acton ends and Huaqiaozi CSD starts, and there's this space in between dead man's land that people want to be in one CSD or the other, and there's just this space between us. So I'm just wondering why it's been so hard to fix it according to what people want? And who decides on why it was drawn like that, who made that decision?
Right, and they say that's probably an ongoing discussion. It's gotta be consensus based.
And we have residents that want to be in one community and ones that want to be in another, and they're in a neutral area. We need someone of authority to say, we're gonna make a decision and this is how it's gonna be done. Yet nobody stepped in and has done that.
So would we write to you if somebody wants to talk? Would we send a letter to you, to you, to you?
Yeah, I think this is something that the department could work on in conjunction with the fifth district office to help facilitate these discussions.
So you can use your business cards.
So a town council, a community town council should not decide where the boundary is. Is that correct?
Well, if it's a consensus based process, then yes, the town council would care.
Well, her question, her question is very specific. The council is not going to make that decision. It will be the community, correct?
Well, and the way it works is that the town councils itself are also advisory bodies to the board supervisors.
Or just the voice.
That's right.
Exactly. So I guess in the end, I mean, to answer your specific question.
They listen to us and then take it to the board supervisor.
So I guess if there was an answer to your questions, it will be the board supervisors. So this is where the boundaries are. But again, we, exactly, I mean, it's a messy process.
The point is the OVOV.
Rosie, what he's saying is, Rosie, that's not there. They're over the top of OVOV and county.
I understand that.
So really, it's not, they're not gonna be able to solve this.
I understand that.
And I think what they've said is that it's up to the supervisors to finally, in other words, the supervisor would be the one that makes the final decision. So that means.
Based on what?
Oh, what?
That is, that is.
Nobody wants to give a life. What is the decision?
I mean, the advice is, yeah, but again, there's no clear one.
Well, just be taken in public hearing or, you know, because it really seems to be a critical issue throughout the year.
There are issues in other places, but it just, it has more implications here. And yeah, again, we.
We've been just raising this as a concern. I mean, we're gonna take this back and communicate this with the people that we work with, the district and our own management. So, you know, it's good to keep raising this as an issue.
It's an ongoing issue and it's a big concern. And there's a, it's not just, you know, this is my zip code and this is your zip code. It's like the whole world changes right there, including area codes, including building places where the bus picks them up for what school.
Post schools and schools.
There's probably eight or nine different items that are in flux right there as to where are we type of thing. And I think really, it just needs to be, here's the line, and everything on this side is gonna be this, everything on this side is gonna be this.
Well, the easy line is the Santa Clarita Valley line and the Antelope Valley lines. So if you're in Santa Clarita, you're actually in Offegale section. If you're in Antelope Valley, you're actually in Acton. That's a pretty simple line to draw. And it crosses over that line. So the people that live in the Santa Clarita Valley feel like they belong to Huaqiaozi. And the people that live in the Antelope Valley belong to Acton. It's the easiest line to draw, and I don't know why nobody determines that that should be the line.
And they changed the line on the other side. They moved it on the other side, so I don't understand why they can't on this side.
But these are the issues that you're gonna come across every time there's two communities that, which they always do, there's always a line, where does that line get drawn? So whatever assistance you can provide us to take the right steps to help the people that are, that we represent.
As a neutral zone.
In the neutral zone.
And I think it's noteworthy what Scott said, that there is something weird going on here where, you know, people that live in Santa Clarita Valley are actually in Acton and vice versa. And so like when I lived in Acton for many years before coming out here, I lived here six years, been here about 13, and in Acton, people feel they're part of the Antelope Valley. We did everything in Antelope Valley, went out to forever them. And Huaqiaozi, since we've been here, we almost never go to the Antelope Valley. So there's a clear distinction between two communities.
We moved those into policies and into a description of it. So that's one thing is that it wasn't taken out, it was rearranged. But the second thing that I think was great that Acton Town Council did recommend is that in the 1980 general plan, there's a description about non-urban areas that, you know, going back to the infrastructure issue, that's, you know, characteristic of a different level of service in terms of infrastructure, in terms of traffic signals, in terms of the intensity of commercial uses and all of those things. And that's actually something that they pointed out in the 1980 plan that they would like to see us carry over into the general plan update. And so we have added that language into the general plan update. And we're hoping that there isn't because we're designing everything to work together. But yes, there could very well in the future, or maybe something we missed, there could be a conflict. It really depends on what the conflict is. But in terms of a land use policy or the land use policy map, it's really the plan, whether it be the countywide general plan or the area plan, which is a component of the general plan that dictates, that kind of solves the conflict. However, if you're talking about more specificity in terms of like the general plan will just say rural land or residential, but it's the CSD and the zoning code that'll tell you more specifically what the standards are, what the height is, the housing type. Are you talking about single family? Are you talking about apartment buildings? In which case, it's really the zoning that tells you what the intent of the general plan is. So it really depends on what the conflict is. But in terms of, you know, if there's an old plan maybe that we didn't look at or we missed something and it says generally that this area should be industrial and that general plan says generally that this area should be rural land, then it's rural land. And that's kind of where the general plan comes into play in terms of dictating or resolving conflicts.
Is the county now trying to, and I've seen on the internet an indication that the county is trying to create a commercial, county commercial zoning ordinance that will incorporate all areas and be a singular ordinance for the entire county? And that has to be commercial land and use of commercial land, right with that? And then they want to change the CSDs in all the communities to conform to it?
That's not true. So we have many, many commercial zones in the zoning code today. And we have many, we have a couple of additional rural commercial zones that we're applying. But at the end of the day, like Carl was saying, they're just tools in the toolbox. So they don't apply unless they're actually added to your zoning map and added to your general plan map. So again, in the case of OVOV, we're not making any land use or zone changes. So even if the tools are in the toolbox, they're not on your map. And there's no intent to then rezone all of the areas to, you know, different commercial zones. Again, it's just tools in the toolbox.
The zone, like A1 and A2, but it's not gonna map it anywhere. They're gonna leave it, the general plan will leave it to us, the area planning folks, to map it. And that's where we will have, you know, more community outreach, more person-specific analysis in terms of deciding where would these specific zones apply. And as Connie said, OVOV is done, so there will happen to be no zoning and land use changes in your community. There's actually a lot of work on our side for the AV side because we are doing land use and zoning changes. We are doing a lot of outreach and we are zoning the rural commercial and rural mixed use zone. But that will be part of the Antelope Valley area plan, not OVOV, so that won't apply to you.
So OVOV will stay put with what they chose to be the different zones? Because a lot of our, we have a lot of mixed zone pieces of property. Where the front of the property is commercial, on the back of A2. And the front was just a little tenth of an acre and the back was 25 acres. Well, they made it all agricultural. So I think it cleaned up a lot of the pieces.
We have a significant ridge line feature issue that's in our CSD right now. How does your hillside design ordinance address significant ridge line features? And do they dovetail together? Do you guys even look at that when area plans put together? How does that work?
Yeah, so the hillside management ordinance is a countywide ordinance. So it does provide a framework in terms of, you know, when slopes over 25% are being proposed for development, over 25% slopes, so steeper slopes, how that development should occur on that property. Again, when we talked about the different layers of development, so the hillside management would be kind of in that zoning code category where it's countywide and it would apply. But where the CSD is more specific, so in the case of significant ridge lines, those two would need to work together. So the significant ridge lines would be protected as the CSD dictates and it would need to work in conjunction with the broader hillside management.
So if you see something when you're planning or something that, you know, looks like you must have built a flat in the top of the hillside, this is sort of the feature that we have.
Exactly, yeah, because the CSD still dictates that those ridge lines need to be protected. So, yeah.
Yeah.
I gotta hook up a thing.
Stop bringing tape on there.
In case anybody doesn't know, despite CSDs and other documents, to film anywhere in the county of Los Angeles requires a permit. Whether you're on private property or public lands requires a permit. Because I dealt with that the last two weeks on a certain piece of property.
Over there.
Over, or the short now.
Down the road.
Down the road. And it says clearly, any filming requires a permit that's issued through Film LA. And if you use pyrotechnics or other device, you have to have a fire marshal and a fire plan approval by fire. And if you violate that, it's actually an arrestable, on a citation, misdemeanor for violating county ordinance.
Now, what if it's an independent film by a couple of broke, like, you know, student filmers?
It clearly states any filming in the county.
So I have something.
There's other ones, right?
Put your kid's order away.
Yeah, student films, I understand it's all under a different one, but they still go through Film LA. We had 11 instances of reports last month. We had, actually, it's on the border between, on the disputed territory. One burglary, two neighbors fighting. We had one councilwoman and his neighbor. We had a grand theft shoplifting from a store, grand theft auto parts, one grand theft auto, two narcotics arrests, but they were all on that other canyon that I won't mention on the other side of the hill. But that's still part of you guys.
You mean, in my area, in Scott's area, that's the area you're talking about?
No, no, no.
Oh, oh, Rich Canyon.
Solid out.
Oh, oh, oh.
Solid out, yeah. We had one felony vandalism issue, he's got, yeah, GTA. Where was it?
Yes.
Uh, Mid Canyon Peterson area. We had a felony vandalism, one vehicle burglary, one penny theft, one non-criminal fire, and one impounded vehicle.
What's a non-criminal fire?
Uh, non-human cause or undetermined cause. It was a little crossfire area, but we'd have to do the arson reports because county sheriff does the arson reports, not county fire. So if it's determined to be questionable, we do a fire report against a number. And they may find nothing, but you still do a fire report.
Was the impounded vehicle, was that a personal vehicle or was that?
It does not say. Probably not registered for.
Expired tags.
Expired tags over six months. So if it was that.
That driver's license.
Uh, we're adjusting that. We're adjusting that, yeah. Member for LAR CIS. What the heck is that? The Los Angeles Regional Interoperability Communication System.
Ah.
Okay, this is a new plan, federally funded, state funded, to develop as a result of 9/11. How many years later? We're trying to integrate communication systems for counties. At LA County, for example, on my little radio here, okay, I have, and I'm just gonna throw it out real quick, 44 zones, 400 sub-channels. I can talk to any police department, any fire department within LA County. I can even talk to KFI and KNX radio because they're on their receiver frequency for civil defense. Okay? However, you have to know, can I zone 8, you're on 12, you know? So it's a little difficult to use, but it can be used. So this new system, the county wants to get away, well, as part of it, it's a federal mandate, so they got money. It was originally given to the San Francisco area, but I guess they couldn't agree on which way was north. So the Fed says, well, let's give it to a bigger county, so it's going to LA. So this community's been in existence for several years and now they're starting to implement. First thing they're gonna do is they're going to try to activate, it's a 4G system that the county owns. And it will service all 45 incorporated cities, all 48 unincorporated cities, plus fire, police, dog catcher, I mean, sorry, animal control, I hope that's not dog catcher, and other public works. But it'll be a multi-channel system that both on radio, which will be another separate system, land-based radio. I can just flip the switch and go talk to county fire. Also, I don't have to have a restricted frequency. If we're doing a parade, for example, with CHP and whoever, I can say, okay, turn on group one and group one is everybody here, fire, police, CHP, animal control, public works. We'll all talk on the same channel at county fire stations. Because I have one at 80s, one at 81s. Camp 11 will have some kind of a tower.
70.
By the way, these are CEQA exempt. So the government has already said, we want these there, so you're gonna install them. And they'll have battery backups and generators and, but they'll be on existing county properties, the only way they were able to do it. So they're gonna try to make them look like a pine tree.
Okay. We've gotten all that, this is on, this we've been through this, that this is on county land, right?
Yeah, one of the reasons we're putting it on county land is so it won't interfere with anybody else's property and anybody's.
So who do we tell them to talk to?
I have to talk to Pat Mallon, executive director. I only have one box, so I was trying to scan it, so I just scanned it.
I can scan right here.
You can scan it?
Yeah. Next up, we have librarian, Natalie Bailey.
Real fast, this isn't a library, but the other day when I was off, I ended up, somebody dropped off a stack of these, but it's for the Palme d'Or to the Los Angeles project section for High Speed Rail Authority. Did you guys get these with the meeting dates?
Well, we got them, the special meeting, this is over there in Acton. We've got something that if you want to leave them here, or if you want to pick them up, then you're right.
Okay, yeah, it looks like the one for us is the Chimboli Cultural Center at the end of the canyon. All the other ones are far away. Okay, so this month in May. Okay, so this month in May, we had a couple of events at the start of the month. We had, um, the Garden Club had a special speaker. They had Bruce Freeman, the Agua Dulce snake guy, and he talked about snakes on this past Saturday, May tenth. We've already had two snakes at the library that we've at least seen. We had a smaller garter snake and then a really big one that freaked out our delivery driver or something fierce. Because he kept going back and forth at our delivery door because of the cool air coming out. And he would like press up against it like one of those draft snakes, except it was real.
Right, too.
Yeah. And then later on Saturday afternoon, we had Pan is My Jumpy, which was a steel drum workshop. We had a steel drum musician and teacher come in. I actually attended because I was working that day and it was fascinating. It takes anywhere from like two to three years to make one of these drums and they cost upwards of four grand a piece. And, yeah, it's, it's just really amazing. And the gentle touch that's required for them because you hit any note too hard and it puts your instrument out of tune. So he uses aircraft aluminum tubing for the, essentially for the mallets and they weigh just nothing. So and he worked really well with the kids and they all got a turn. And then we have like a little jam session, me on cowbell and some of the others. Yeah, so it was really good, good for them. Yeah. So, and then tonight, right before that, we had a poetry workshop on reading, doing close reading of poetry and also writing poetry. And then the same teacher is going to do another program in June on short stories. So writing short stories and then getting the most out of your short story reading. And then tomorrow, we have Artie Lou, that's a children's program. But he's, he's a younger guy. He's really popular at our other libraries, but he does a little bit of everything.
That'll be under Coalition as part of our community outreach to get more information out there on how to prepare and how to recover from disasters.
Six, six o'clock?
It's six P M. And it's a large meeting room. Just a reminder, because of all the multiple fires we've had in up in San Marcos and down in San Diego, we do have a website, A D Disaster Planning dot com, where we have a link. And also on our Facebook, Agua Dulce Disaster Planning. You can go to either one of those locations and there's a link that goes to Alert L A. Anybody that hasn't gone there, I would recommend they do so. They can register with Alert L A and it's a backtalk system. Once you register and there's a fire or some type of disaster in your, in your area, they will call your telephone back and let you know what's going on, especially if there's a fire and there's a need to evacuate.
Thanks very much for letting us address you. I'm here with a few of our neighbors from Sleepy Valley. Sleepy Valley, for those of you who don't know, is just down Sierra Highway towards New Bull, Santa Clarita, just past the Shen. And it's a small community of probably a hundred or so households. There used to be hunting cabins back in the thirties and forties before people could afford to go to Vegas for the weekend. The area itself has been, it's fairly unique. I mean, if you drive down Sierra Highway, you suddenly find yourself, you think you're in Thousand Oaks. There's huge oak trees everywhere, there's pine trees, there's a stream that runs for several months of the year that runs through the community. And Sleepy Valley's vegetation is really driven by the runoff from the Sierra Plateau Mountains up on the canyon and they converge there and then they cut off down into the Santa Clarita watershed. Okay, that's Sleepy Valley. I'm actually president of our group called Friends of Sleepy Valley, Inc., where a nonprofit organization that some of the residents put together a few years ago to deal with some of the issues that we've been facing, like a potential widening of Sierra Highway. There was gonna be a situation where Spring Street was gonna be made easier to access, which would have taken a whole bunch of people's yards out and trees. We put concrete walls and chain and fencing in there, which is really not what we like in that part of the world. And then recently, we've had some issues with water. We were at a meeting recently and, and obviously you know that down in Sleepy Valley, we have a residence or a sort of small church down there, which is run by Tony Alamo, Tony Alamo Ministries. And there's a lot of you know, Tony Alamo was jailed basically for the rest of his, his natural life a few years ago. He has a number of what I would characterize as compounds around the country, down in Texarkana, in Arkansas. And as a result of the reasons why he was actually jailed, a number of civil lawsuits were brought after he was put in jail and the assets of the Alamo Ministries were in the process of being liquidated. What caught our attention was a reference that if you go and, you know, Google Tony Alamo, you'll see, I think, one website called Tony Alamo News that sent this to the, to the Agua Dulce Town Council. And that reports on all the latest comings and goings that are going on. And essentially what's happened is there's about half a billion dollars' worth of civil liability judgments against this guy. And the lawyers who are representing the these victims, beneficiaries of these judgments, are slowly but surely forcing the sale of these acreages and compounds that he owns in different parts of the world. And the next one up in his head, and it's in writing, that there's billions of dollars of water rights sitting under his forty or so acres of the, of Sleepy Valley, of Sierra Highway. Fundamentally flawed concept. What we said to L A County's residents when this original C E P was drafted back in two thousand, uh, two thousand eight was, you know, the, the recovery rate in a normal year is about half of what these reports have been put together suggested is, is that water comes down from the Sierra Plateau and refills lots of very shallow aquifers, obviously very close to the surface, otherwise we wouldn't have huge oak trees and bits and pieces that we have there. And we think that as, you know, drought years come by, as we had in two thousand and four, it's gonna cause some problems for us. We, we experienced before that water walling permit was issued, some of the trees dying off. And these are trees that we can't cut branches off that are more than an inch without permit from L A County or somebody in Scott's uniform shows up and escorts us to jail for a misdemeanor. And there's a, that's effectively beginning to happen. I did wander around, rather than handing out paper, I'm just gonna hand it on my lap up here because I wandered around the community this afternoon and took some pictures of the various oak trees and cottonwoods and black locusts and all sorts of other stuff that are basically dying in the community.
Even trees of heaven, which is really.
Yeah, it takes a lot, I, I just spent four hundred and twenty-five dollars over the Easter weekend to get the support from the Agua Dulce Town Council. That in the event that this becomes an issue where somebody says, well, there's obviously billions of dollars of water sitting under Sleepy Valley that we can just pump it to or blue in the face, that your supporters with L A County saying, no, that's actually not the case. We have a very unique part of the community down there. It's been around for hundreds of years. We know that because we've had oak trees on our property. I, you know, obviously not from California, but I got here as quick as I could. I've been here sixteen years. And there are trees that have fallen down on our property, very large mature oak trees when they tipped over. They revealed to tape in Indian artifacts underneath them, which are down in the historical society in Santa Clarita. So this is a very, very longstanding part of the community. The, the, I'm sad the planning department have gone because they're talking about this special ecological area and it's, they're looking, I've looked at this, I've looked into extent down into Sleepy Valley areas around here. And I'm concerned that by the time they finally get around to doing that, there'll be no S E left for the A to actually include when they get down to Sleepy Valley. Because as you can see, we've got very, very mature oak trees and other, you know, components of our habitat, which are basically just keeling over and dying with this pressure at the moment. There's no way in the world that Sleepy Valley could withstand the sort of pumping that would be possible that's been contemplated in the press from what this.
Being advertised.
Lawyers who are representing these victims and are giving these public hearings that he was representing Alamo. The dates of those emails that Alamo is referenced to be sending to people in these press articles is very coincident with the dates of these reports that were done for the water walling business down Sierra Highway. So I think it's reasonable to assume that the same guy was writing those reports at about, at the same time.